Yeah.
Out, there we go.
The mayor's budget is the mayor.
The one for all would have been the meters at the end. You could have snooped them out over a longer period of time.
Ready?
Yeah.
So, the mayor's budget has minimal changes. We did put in a reclassification for the administrative assistant position. Looking at other admin positions throughout the city was a grade below the everybody else. Trying to bring that up. Other changes that you'll see. Was, well, it goes together. So, we had an increase in city promotions. We asked for 3,000 and then with some cuts, it's a little bit less than that. And that's to help offset our office account that is always cut. Or we go through it every year and have to try to sort of find money. So, that's just churning up what really needs to be. We added an increase in the cellphone account because we have more bodies taking advantage of our cellphones type in now. That's really it, I think. And computers, but that's from with the consolidation plan, so.
How's the cellphone thing working out?
Great.
Is it?
Yeah, and-
Any, how are we doing like up to D for replacement or anything?
So, now, the majority of staff, I think, and we can get numbers, are using their own cellphones.
Okay.
And they're taking advantage of this type in. And we're, there may be-
They have to sign that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, and Bill's looking at some cost-saving opportunities there, too. So, that might be forthcoming in the next year. It's not quite ready.
Okay.
But he's always looking out.
Yeah, I have no, I have no questions on that. Anybody have any? Okay.
Okay, thanks.
When are we gonna go over the 1,000 accounts? Questions on those?
I have any?
Joining his retirement and-
Oh, is he retired?
Yeah.
Okay.
And he does consulting work out in Colorado, so.
Oh, it's folks. Okay.
What you got, Mark?
You're up, Mark.
Okay, well, this is one of my first times to do this. What do you want from me?
Just an overview of how you did what you did. What are the key issues and items? And then we'll ask any questions.
Okay. As far as the budget proposal, I did not prepare a formal memorandum previously. I submitted, I think, what, some informal stuff to the mayor's office. I'm assuming that was utilized in the number. Do we have a current number that you can give me, you know?
Yeah, 280.
280? All right, well, that's about what it's-
284.
Yeah. Okay, that's what was done last year, I think, the same figure. And I guess what I, the problem in my case is just the fact that it varies so much from year to year depending on what's going on. I had done, just for a historical perspective. See here. Oh, here it is, yeah. You know, in '09, the actually utilized attorney's fees were 311,340. In 2010, it went down to 250,000. In 2011, it jumped back to 297,734. And then, beginning in, let's see, 2012, 13, it went to 244,599. Fiscal year 14, 258,713. 15, it went to 278,486. 16, it was 283,214. And fiscal year 2017, it was 321,144, which is as close as we've come to the old figure from years past, which was the high of 311, but we still didn't get there. Well, I guess we did, we actually surpassed that last year. But that was primarily last year was due to the complete reorganization that was done.
Right, yeah.
And-
And we understand that-
And the beginning of the company number one lawsuit, when they sued us first. In the fall, we sued them, which would be the current fiscal year. And then, of course, then there's the litigation that's going on now with the county and everything else. In the past, what we have always tried to do is anything that we can shift on to legit, we do. But the company number one suit and the case with the county are not things that are covered by legit. So, that forces us to do the defense or prosecution of the cases, which immediately raises the cost. The routine things seem to stay the same from year to year. The only thing that's probably up when it comes to routine stuff is the city has been acquiring and selling a lot of property. And so, those negotiations and contracts to do that have also upped it a little bit.
So, we've got a, and we're not gonna get into specific things that, issues.
Oh, no, I wouldn't talk about any legal issues. No, I'm just-
Just set, we're not gonna talk about it, but if you look at, if you look at the broad picture, you've got typical ongoing ordinance reviews, et cetera, et cetera. That's one chunk of, of things.
Right.
And I'm assuming, since I've been on, that that's pretty predictable in terms of the dollars.
It is. Last year, it went up because we took a greater role in ASANA and making sure everything was there in order to, we didn't have changes occurring at the council table and stuff as much. So, we did last year sort of up our involvement. We had, earlier, we had just done a review and handed it back to the department head. And then, what we have is a couple of cases where maybe an older version that we hadn't seen yet was being put in by mistake so the council would get the wrong one. So, Christine is monitoring all of that very closely and double-checking ASANA to make sure that what's in there is what we did review. And that was to avoid those things. And really, it's Christine's monitoring of ASANA would be the only increase last year is that she is more involved in making sure that you don't get the wrong piece of paper in your packet.
Now-
But other than that, that would be the only increase.
Do you have any idea what level, what number that is?
Of what?
Of the two, oops, no way. Of the 284.
It's still up there, it's like the same as last year. Like the 280 is original.
Yeah, gotcha. Do we know, can you put a number on what that normal transaction is? The normal ordinance review?
Yes, I think we, I can't put it on right now.
No, 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 I'm saying that that's a big piece of the, of the total.
Yes.
And then, you've got, you've got litigation that is current and ongoing.
Yes.
And if any of that goes over, can you do like a forecast of, this is gonna take months, several months into next year to get that, to probably get this thing resolved? Is that, or is that beyond what you can do? Because that's the second piece, is the litigation that's outside.
You mean into July, yes.
Yeah.
I would say, I would say, we may get some preliminary resolutions this year, but the final decisions in those cases are not gonna come in the next fiscal year. There's no question.
So, there's, and you know what we've spent historically on that kind of?
Well, it's kind of, that kind of case, believe it or not, is unusual. Almost, most of the litigation that we have is the routine enforcement stuff and things like that. But the dispute that we have with company number one is unusual. It almost harkens back to the old litigation involving the wastewater treatment plan.
Gotcha.
Where we had to get deeply involved.
All right. So, what, I guess the real question is, what percentage of the 280 is typical?
Like, standard, standard everyday procedures?
All right, let, can I-
Yeah.
Get your memo on that?
And the other piece-
Yes, I can do that.
The other piece that we, that we talked about was we made an investment in the budget in munico, mun- town? Unicode?
Yes.
Does that have an impact on your efficiency?
I think Christine was in favor of it and felt that it would increase our efficiency.
So, there should be a return on that investment.
She is constantly looking into the code and historical parts of the code, which is what we were hoping would help. You know, thanks.
Okay.
Would it help if you had a separate budget for lawsuits? Like, if this, if you had a base amount that covered?
Well, that's, that's what I'm sort of trying to get to.
Yeah.
If we can, if we can do it, you know, you've got one category. Because then what you could do is you could track.
The one that doesn't have the volatility.
Correct.
And then, the one that has lawsuits, then you could decide what the, what the average is.
That's exactly right. So, what I'm saying is trying to treat it more as a department that has components to it.
And I think what you're asking for is having maybe a couple extra account numbers where we have one that is like-
That's what we did with the wastewater treatment plan. There was a separate account for that litigation. Which has now been used up, but-
So, yeah, so have one for-
Definitions of like ordinance.
Ordinance, you know, legislation.
Right.
And then have one for-
Review, major contract review.
Contract reviews.
Given the way we break down our bills, I mean, like, for example, we've got all the current time right in my hand through March. And April hasn't been printed yet, but we even have that number.
Yeah.
So, you know, it's broken down by almost every subject matter. So, it's easy to clear that out.
I think that'd be a good thing. And then, after a couple of years, you've got some very good statistically significant data saying that we can count on-
Right.
You know, it actually, you- That's too much. I was saying you could actually get down to hours.
Right, well, that would be the best way to-
Hours, which you already collect.
Yeah, we collect the hours.
That's a separate sheet.
I mean, for example-
But that's what you could do. And you say that, you know, on the average per year, we spend 1,800 hours doing legislative ordinances, et cetera. We do contract work, we do whatever the, whatever the things you come up with are your categories.
Yes.
But I think that would certainly help us a little bit. You're always gonna have those items that are gonna appear because you get sued, for instance. And those you're gonna have to have as a one-off, but at least you'll know what your fundamental-
If you have spiked one year, you can historically look back and say, okay, this was specifically for-
Right.
A couple lawsuits.
Right.
Or a year where we had reorganization, where that could have been a line and you could say, hey, we devoted so many hours to this.
And those lawsuits like this, which have, you know, interrogatories, depositions, they're just outrageously expensive. And usually, legit picks up all that cost for us when it's, when somebody sues us and it's covered.
Okay. I think that's a good, that's a good strategy for next time, but-
Shall I talk further with Julia or Keith about breaking down what you want?
I would put logical categories.
Yeah, because I think we can probably break it down any-
If I could see five, four or five.
Because you get much more detail now, you're not gonna get, you're not gonna give what you want.
Three to five.
Resolutions and ordinances, contractor view, lawsuits, personnel issues.
Yeah, and they're already broken down.
Yeah.
And we can go back historically with a little effort and put it together for the past several years.
Yeah.
Well, maybe that would be good, just to have it as a reference point. You know, if that day, if we could get that-
Yeah, because like, you wouldn't put in, it would show up as other, for instance, like the reorg. That's not gonna happen again for a while, not to-
But it, but it was separately itemized.
Not since I only run to be here for reorganizing. Yeah. But those kinds of things are one-offs, and you can deal with those, that's all. Okay.
Done it?
Any other questions? I think.
Oh, and the other thing I was gonna do, suggest is, and I had this discussion with the mayor when we were talking about it, is, you know, the concern about knowing where you are. I always know where you are. And I, what about if we send a monthly report to the mayor's office telling you exactly where you are?
That'd be great, Mark.
I mean, I just, because I get, I get that report prepared for me every month anyway. I know where we are. So, I'll give it, I'll share it with them and they'll have it.
Perfect. Perfect.
Now, that report isn't broken down by every subject matter.
No, 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 no.
But it, but it-
No, no.
Yeah.
But that, okay.
That's fine. All right. Thank you, Mark.
Very welcome.
Good. Good progress. That's the best meeting. Here comes Trump.
Hi, Jen.
Hi, Jen, how are you?
I'm good. Hello.
You ready?
We wait for Julia or?
Allison, do we need to wait for Julia? Or are you okay?
We're okay.
Okay.
Okay, very good.
You got the floor.
Thank you. So, we're talking about procurement first?
Certainly.
Okay. Procurement's a very small budget. Pretty much, it consists of salary expenses, office supply expenses. Really, one of our single largest expenses, if you don't look at salaries, is for our new contract management system that we implemented a little over a year ago. It's, um, let me look at the org, the account number here, 546029. I did wanna call your attention to this because there is a set amount that I need for the software. I did originally budget that amount at 97.50 for the year. If I couldn't get that amount, I just couldn't re-up the software. We've used that software to give our vendors what we call a procurement portal. And what this procurement portal does allows vendors to see all of our active solicitations, see results, register as vendors, allows us then to, you know, at the click of a button, send information out to certain vendors based on what commodity codes they've selected. Going forward, we'd like to expand into online bidding as well. And we purchased this software because we knew that it had that functionality.
So, it's like, the system is like a registration?
That's part of it, for the vendors.
You're not using the tail end of the other side of it, which is the bid process?
Yep, yeah, yeah, that's what we'd like to focus on.
Now, is that in that, is that in that number?
Not the 9181, but at the, at the original amount of 97.50, yes. Yeah, so there's a set, there's, there's a set fee for it and-
Gotcha. You said it was 97?
Originally, my original request was 97.50, I'm not, for 2019.
Is that function, is, can you, is there a portion, do you get any more for the amount for that? Or are we over, in other words, we're over the basic, but not high enough for the additional?
No.
Does that make sense?
It got, it got cut, my request got cut.
No, that's my-
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I think what she's saying, to get everything that she needs, she needs the full funding.
All right, if she doesn't, if she doesn't get the other-
If I wouldn't get the 97.50, I would at least have to take off the online bidding.
Or a transfer. Or have to read some other accounts under the word.
Oh, okay, okay. So, what I was trying to find out is 9,000, does 9,000 take care, can you get rid of 7,000 or 5,000?
500, yeah, about 500 and so, 570.
Then I would have to just not do an entire other, this other module for the online bidding.
So, it's a module?
Yeah.
And the cost of the module is totals?
With the contract management plus the online bidding would be that 97.50.
Okay, so what, you gotta, you gotta steal the 400, $250 from someplace else?
That's one alternative.
Yeah, that's one alternative.
To raid, raid some other accounts.
Raid some other account. Can you do that?
If my office supplies or the advertising expense wouldn't come in as high, I could.
Because it'd be a shame to lose the, because then you, if, what you're saying is if you, if you don't get that, you could take that other number down to nine, whatever the module cost. What does the module cost?
I wanna say it's a six of maybe, or split of about six and three, approximately. About, about 6,000 some for just the modules that we have now.
So, it's a question of do you reduce it to by six? And then, or do you get $300 from someplace else to get the full module? Because you don't need the money, if you don't get the module, you don't need that total amount.
Correct.
Gotcha.
Jen, can you talk about the benefits of the module?
Sure, so it's actually a mayor's wish that we offer online bidding for vendors.
And that's gonna save you some time, I would imagine, your staff?
Uh, it's a convenience for the vendor community.
Okay.
Sounds like a decision you're gonna have to make. Okay.
Okay. Just some of the other things that we budget from procurement. Since we flip-flop a little bit between travel and training, sometimes the travel budget is a little bit higher to attend a specific conference. Sometimes the training budget is a little bit higher. In FY19, we're planning a, quite a lot of training for our staff. Number one, for myself, to go through the next level of my coursework, which is certified public purchasing officer certification and training. And then, also for my senior buyer to get two more courses under his belt for the certified public procurement buyer position. And then, one class for the buyer, just so she can start toward her training on a certified buyer position as well. And then, the only other single largest expense is in the advertising expense. We have that for departments that may not budget at all or either budget enough for solicitations for the advertisements that go in the newspaper and whatnot.
The training piece, does that help your succession plan?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
How strong, on a scale of 1 to 10, how strong is your succession plan?
How, well, say that again.
On a scale of 1 to 10, how strong is your succession plan as it exists?
It would be a natural progression for the senior buyer to be trained well enough and have the right certification so that if I were to move on, he could easily fulfill my role.
And this helps in that whole succession plan by getting people ready, layers below him.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. Any, any other questions?
Maybe if she can't find money in some other places, I know she's got, I know, but she's got a contingency there. In the advertising, where she's saying is for other departments, you know, maybe we can take the 600, $500 there and move it up to the software.
She can find it.
But-
That's her, that's her-
That's fine.
I know she's planning in case somebody else is a plan, but take care of yourself first.
I told you, it's because Mark took all the money, yes, apparently.
Yeah, Mark's going, he's already doing his own work.
At least you aren't the last person there. At least you aren't the last person in.
It just trickles down.
I, uh, thank you for what you do, you do, you do a great job.
Thank you.
That department is a very important department, just-
Thank you.
You know, for the amount of money that we, we spend. You know, it's good to know that it's, we're in good shape, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
But we have no plans to move on, correct?
No.
Okay.
Unless she becomes deputy mayor or-
Everyone's, everyone's a deputy mayor, they were all deputized, so that's-
That's true.
Do you wanna hit GOB, do you have any?
Sure.
Yeah, let's hit the GOB.
HR is down in the hallway.
That's right, we'll do GOB.
Oh, GOB, oh, she got another one, okay.
Yeah, well, it's fine now. I know it's late, but we're gonna go.
Okay, so, what we budget for with the GOB, how this process works every year, is that I work with the county to get a proposed list of expenses by category for the upcoming fiscal year. We've been paying half of the GOB expenses, which includes maintenance services, maintenance supplies, electricity, gas usage, you know, pest control, cleaning services, security personnel, insurance and whatnot. Looking at the FY18 compared to the FY19 request, the FY19 request is a little bit higher by about $18,000 overall. Now, the numbers you see reflected are one-half of the total operating costs for the GOB, okay? So, when I say that the increase or decrease was, say, $18,000, our portion of that excess would be half of that, does that make sense? The increase from FY18 to FY19 was attributed to plugging more money into electricity costs for the GOB, general maintenance items, maintenance services, and then general maintenance supplies, with the bulk of that being the electricity for the GOB.
All these are in MOU?
I don't know if they're called out per se in the MOU, just that expenses, the operating expenses are. I don't know if it details electricity and maintenance services and pest control. I look at it as total operating costs.
Total operating cost times 50%.
That's what we've been doing, yes.
Just one question I have.
There is a discussion, too, that the agreement actually is a 42, could be 42% because the agreement that we signed with the county said that you're responsible only for the operating expense in proportion to the space that you're using.
So, it's a square foot calculation?
And we, and we have public works do that calculation and we're at 42%. So, there is the possibility that that needs to get adjusted, but that's still a discussion.
The current MOU, the current MOU says 50?
No, it says the square footage split. So, we may even have, going back, you know, some discussion of that. It's all in the mix of other things.
Yes.
Okay.
The only question I have is on the line for the security guards personnel.
Yes.
You were projected for 44,000. We're budgeting for 30. Is there any?
Yeah, but he was saying the project, you can't look at the projection number, right? You gotta look at the, the budget number.
It's just set to revised budget, it's usually the same, one of the same.
Okay.
Yeah, so you're looking at the 30, 33. Okay.
Um, what we also include, um, in the total G O B budget is any C I P item. Um, the county has not put in as great of a C I P list for FY nineteen as they have in the past. That's actually, um, quite a reduced amount, um, for FY eighteen, they, or, yeah, FY eighteen doing things like, you've seen all the painting and the lighting upgrades in the hallways, um, that was a big portion of it. For FY nineteen, they're looking at maybe second floor carpet and doing some renovations to some of the bathrooms.
But the city's only approved up to ten thousand dollars worth?
Correct.
That's, that's so, that's where we've set the amount that we're, we're authorizing to contribute.
And that's been communicated to them?
Um, I would have to ask the administration if that's been communicated to them.
I have to check, I don't know.
Let's make sure we do. Okay. Questions? Good.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks very much.
Thanks, Jen.
Thank you.
Jen, I got a question for you later on. Nothing to do with this.
Are you sure? You wanna ask me now?
Yeah. Meters.
Meters, that's all.
Just, just do a one.
Explore it, I mean, like, yeah.
Just a little, with the impact. Hi, Jane.
Hi, how are you?
I'm good, how are you?
I'm very good.
Floor is yours.
Well, it's pretty straightforward. Um, Keith has got it nice and clean for me.
Light straight forward.
Um, there weren't that many changes. Um, we did see a big drop in, in the cost of health insurance for our department because we had one employee who had a parent or a husband and wife, and, uh, we hired the husband. So we were able to get two individuals, and that was cheaper.
We're doing a spouse recruitment.
Yes.
Actually.
He's like, that's an idea.
Qualified, that's, that's a great idea.
It is, it, it's a lot cheaper for us when it comes to the health insurance benefit.
Would encourage, would have married city employees, is that? No, 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 not good.
I, I don't.
That's a whole other thing.
Let's not go crazy there, no.
That would be a marketing budget, you're gonna, you're gonna money.
Yeah, that's gonna have to fall under a big recruitment budget.
Yes.
Um, let's.
Local, local expense might go.
See.
Definitely will.
Uh, wellness, I think we did an increase there. Um, mainly because, uh, you know, we wanna put in more programs. Um, compared to last year, we've done, I think, extremely well. We're on target for the gold award this year for Maryland's Healthiest Businesses. We've gone from, um, on the, on track to, uh, we leaped over the bronze and got a silver award. And I think this year we're on target for the gold award, so.
If we, have, is there a way to put a number on that?
A number?
Value.
Well, I think there's probably, um, not what I would call cash.
A hard number. Yeah, it's a soft number.
But the soft number could probably be reflected throughout the entire organization. Um, our wellness program plays a big part in one of our discounts for our Chesapeake.
Right.
Um, on our employees', uh, workers' compensation insurance.
Right.
So as long as we have a well-oiled working wellness program, that applies discounts to us.
So there is a value, I mean, there is, that's actually almost a hard number.
There's one value. Then there's another value, Legit, who was our other carrier for liability. They also want you to have a good wellness program in place. And we have seen a drop in the number of workers' compensation cases, um, on a monthly and annual basis. So between education through safety, education through wellness, we have been able to actually move some of our at-risk enrollees and spouses or children into a better status.
Yeah, general pool.
Yes.
That's good.
So even if we moved one.
Yeah.
It would be better, it's still cheaper to spend twelve thousand.
Yeah, no, I get you.
Compared to one catastrophic hospital stay.
Right.
For a catastrophic illness, which would end up going over or even near, um, what our, our, um, stop loss is.
Yeah.
Which is two hundred and fifty thousand for one individual.
Yeah.
So everything that we're doing there, it will, in soft numbers, affect everything else. Um, let's see. I believe we remain the same as far as the E A P goes. That's three visits per employee. And we would even allow a spouse to come in if it's a personal problem where the issue may be a, a domestic issue. Um, once the employee had had their initial assessment, the other two visits, they would still just charge us for one person and allow the spouse to come in, so we're very pleased with that. Um, let's see, what else? The retiree match, that's kind of a, a guesstimation. We increased our, um, our enrollees this year by twenty-eight percent, so we, you know, we're gonna end up having a lot more to cover for that first, um, you know, quarter of four percent. They get, uh, twenty-five percent of the first four percent, uh, as a match, so that's free money. Um, workers' comp, hmm, our group went down a little bit. And I do believe that was, um, based on, uh, the audit that was done on the payroll through workers' compensation, and so our rates were applied appropriately. The, the employee picnic and the banquet, I believe, we did increase it.
It's flat, I think.
Oh, it's flat, twenty-five, twenty-five, okay.
Yeah. We increased it last year.
Yeah, last year we increased it, so, um, a good time was had by all at both, um,
Yeah.
Events, so we would like to keep it there. Uh, house keys for employees, we did actually have one employee that, um, participated in that this year. And this is enough money to do three in a cap, in a fiscal year. So we're still, um, you know, marketing that particular program. And we've had a couple that just, you know, they would like to have participated, but they just didn't have the credit worthiness to get through the program. But we've set them up with some, um, credit management so that they could get some tools to help themselves in bringing those credit numbers into, uh, a more reliable set of figures, so that they could be creditworthy. Office supplies. It's a minor bump. Probably more for paper than anything else. Um, postage, um, we went up just a, a tiny bit last year and now we're back down. Which is fine, we, we didn't use as much this year as we thought we would. Let's see, copiers. Now, last year, we had, we entered into a new program, our new contract year for our rental, and now we've entered into another, so I'm not sure if we're good on that copier price.
It's a question I meant to ask, Jen. Are we on cost per copy or are we on outright lease?
Uh, we have a full citywide contract now, and that's a flat rate, I believe, for everything, it's a, and we'll see savings over time. Bill implemented that savings plan this year. Uh, it's not for copy.
Have we, have we looked at a cost per copy because I'd used to be one of my businesses, and in, in a lot of the cost per copy program, your maintenance is included in the cost per copy. So I, and when you usually have overall, you also have a maintenance contract with those copiers? We can, we can take that offline later, but.
Bill's coming in next.
Yeah.
Bill's coming in next.
Oh, good.
Yeah, we're just.
So it's under Bill, it's under Zill's area? Oh, good, well, we can, we can skip that, okay.
Telephone, it, it stayed the same. Advertising, we just.
Yeah.
That's in case, you know, we ha, we have to replace a job, we need to recruit.
Just hit the big ones, Jane. Hit the little ones.
Yeah. Yeah, they're, all of mine are pretty little.
We trust you. Yeah, I'm telling you, well.
All right.
Yeah.
Uh, training, um, we kept it, uh, we bumped it up just a little bit, uh, only because, um, I, I think I, I wanna send somebody to Munis next year. And what else have we got there? The tuition, uh, college tuition. Now, these are the individuals, I think I had three or four individuals, we didn't get all the names in there, um, that have come forward that wanna take advantage of either a bachelor's program or a master's program. And this would be our, um, seventy-five percent that we would be responsible for, for up to twelve credits annually.
I think I asked this last year, but I don't remember. Is there, is there a thing that they have to, in order to keep this, they have to stay for a period of time?
It is, it is not.
You're saying no, you're saying yes.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, I thought you were going for grade point average, I'm sorry.
There is a GPA, but there is not a tie-in to lock you into a job.
No, 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 I'm talking about, I'm talking about somebody.
I thought we did have that. No, we.
It's not there.
You have to be here a certain amount of time before you can get it.
Right.
There's nothing on the back end.
We, it, it is for law enforcement. We put it to the academy as part of the contract.
And that's.
They have their own.
It's a, it's a whole separate.
Yeah, they are not even in this group.
But most businesses now are, are protecting themselves because it, what? Having, having been there, I get my degree, I'm gone. So I've, just something to throw out that we should think about that.
We can always add it, um, these are the fir, the first group that's taking advantage of it, I think, I don't think we had anybody last year.
We didn't.
And it's not unreasonable, because that's what's, that's pretty much industry.
Oh, no.
You know, you gotta, you gotta be here at least five years after you get your, get your degree.
Only take three, or four.
Should be, most of the time, actually, there's some companies that actually say it's gotta be in the, it's gotta be in the business you're in to get that, but that's a, I just, I just think that's a good thing, cause they have skin in the game.
And dues are what they are, um, and there's the total. Three hundred and eight, two forty-four, oh, six.
I actually don't have any questions for that, for your stuff.
Yeah, it's a, it's a small, small group.
And you guys have any questions? Thanks, Jane. Appreciate it very much.
You're welcome. You're welcome, thank you.
Thank you, Jane.
You're welcome.
Okay, where are we? I was nowhere here. Didn't have this building we did. Uh, your resources, we're done. We're up to I T, I S, I T.
I S?
I S slash I T?
Uh, yeah, let me see what time it is for I S.
We're going on camera, so.
Okay. Careful with this group.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
All right. Uh, you're up.
Okay. Um, we are this year operating on a very, uh, very slimmed down budget. We're actually operating, our operating cost is six percent slash, we're operating, um, significantly lower when you take into everything. Um, trying to offer, uh, as close to the same lo, level of service as we can, um, with the, the cuts that, that we've had. The only, the only objects of any, um, any, I guess, seriousness are a reclassification of our systems admin to an assistant director on the I T side, uh, to offer some, um, some redundancy if, if I'm out. Cause John, John Lee is assistant director on the J I S side, he handles all the projects. If I'm out for a extended period of time or get hit by a bus or something, uh, there's nobody on the I T side to handle pro, projects and, and services. Steve has proven himself o, over, uh, the last few years to be a very capable young man, so, um, we, we ran that through, it was approved, so we're gonna be putting him through as the assistant director on the I T side. Um, the other thing we have is another staffer being transferred from the police department. Uh, Kendall is a, she is great. Um, she's been working full-time at our site for the past year. Um, since we stood up the J I S division with John and his team, um, to offer ser, services for the P D. She's gonna be transferred over as a crime analyst, um, focusing on the crime data analyst content that she does now without some of the more menial tasks that, that she does for the police department. Um, our hope there is to, um, really provide an, an enhanced level of service and, uh, and quality data to the police department. Um, other than that, everything is just, uh, more or less business as usual, the same, same thing. It's the budget, excuse me. Bu, budget detail breaks down pretty much every dollar, or dollar by dollar for every service that, that we're gonna be requesting in the budget.
Can you pull up, uh, five oh one oh oh one?
In the detail?
Yeah. Uh, no, yeah, please pull it in detail.
Excuse me.
It's on two pages, of course, as always. So it starts here, tell me when you're ready to go to the next page.
Go to the next page. I screwed up. Could we go not to the detail page?
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's, like, back over here.
Yeah, go back, go back.
Excuse me.
Yeah, here we go. There's this.
What am I missing?
Looking at, compared to last year, we were two, two thirty-nine, this year we're at three sixteen.
It didn't show that in the other slide, though.
No, 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 over there, you're just looking at this year detail, so it.
Oh, 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 okay, so there's my question.
It's, it's, it's just. It's just breaking that three sixteen in the detail.
Bring it over to, uh, person who's a crime analyst.
The two, so.
And.
So the detail breaks that three sixteen out? You wanna go back over there?
So she's no longer in the police department budget, she's on.
There's.
She's on.
The reclass.
And then you had the reclass of the, uh, assistant director.
And, and we put in a, a merit increase for Bill.
So the positions that they came from in the police, that's gone?
Correct.
Yes. Yes, it was, yes, yeah.
So that was flat.
Over our citywide, yeah. Assuming that the crime analyst wasn't grant funded, one time the crime analyst was grant funded, I can't even call last year.
Oh, okay.
I could let you know if you needed to know.
I don't think it was.
Don't think it was last year.
Yeah.
It is straight south.
I think we skipped last year, the year before we may have been.
Okay. I answered that question, okay. That's all the questions I had. Does anybody have any questions?
No, I mean, hmm.
Were you gonna ask about the copiers?
Oh, yeah.
That's it.
Yes.
That's why we have Kim.
I have it on this page, it's a note. Ask about cost per copy. The copies, how do we handle the copiers now?
This current fiscal year, every department, um, had their own lease with Canon. Everybody handled their own contracts, everybody handled their own purchasing, their own, their own, um, processing of payments, their own, e, everything. Um, we went ahead and, um, we renegotiated wi, with Canon, we were able to get a significant. Um, we went ahead and, um, we, we negotiated with, with Canon, we were able to get a significant savings on that. Um, so, so it's now four thousand dollars a month for, for the entire city. Um, it saves us, what was the total amount? Do you remember what the total amount was on that? I, I'm talking about, I can't remember. It was several thousand dollars a month is what we're saving.
And that includes, uh, maintenance?
Yes, it's maintenance, it's, it's, they're all leased and they're all under one fleet agreement. So, instead of having to get a new lease agreement for every single device, if you wanted to add one, it just slaps onto our new lease, our new fleet agreement. Um, so, that's, everything is standardized, everything has one, like, we, we have machines right now, well, they're, they're being swapped out now, but the old agreement, we had stuff that was three years old, four years old, six months old, just ring, the, the whole gambit basically, brings the whole gambit. Now, everything is uniform, um, they're all gonna be swapped out at the same time, at the end of the existing lease agreements for, for, for new devices, um, and it's all standardized. Our, our department now gets all the invoices, well, the s- single invoice, and we, we process it, we pay it, we handle the whole, the whole thing. So, the individuals depart, individual departments are no longer going to be tasked with that, that, uh, that operation.
Do they look for you, do you know, a cost per copy program?
Um, the, yes, that was part of, they broke it down for us. We down, ended up not going with the cost per copy, we ended up going with the, the, the pool. So, the entire city shares a pool of copies based on the historical usage of how many black and white and how many colored pages. Um, and there, there are no over charges, we just have to, um, we actually got, they, they threw in a software called Uniflow that, that we're now using on the backend, so we can monitor, maintain, and, and kind of control all the copiers across the city to make sure that people aren't, you know, abusing, doing personal stuff, um, you know, kinda keep, keep track of usage statistics a lot more closely than, than, than we were before.
The only reason I'm getting into the weeds is 'cause that used to be my business, so.
Oh, okay.
I'm, I'm, did you just, did you do a calc- a calculation on return, on investment for lease versus cost per copy? I would suggest next time we do that, let Keith run a economic, 'cause unless things have changed dramatically, there are some advantages, um, to the cost per copy program versus the non-cost per copy program.
Okay.
But that may have changed, I have been out of it now for.
A few years?
Few years.
Okay, yeah, we'll.
But it's, it's worth looking into, 'cause.
Yeah, we'll definitely explore that when we lease this up.
Okay.
And we, um, uh, we've been chatting with Bill about, um, other ways to implement, um, or get rid of paper and, and go paperless, so, um, we're working towards that, that goal in mind.
Any other questions? I don't have anymore.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Bye, guys.
Yeah, no problem. Told you.
Doing general fund first, just gonna try to, um, enlarge it so that you can actually see it, and then we'll have to scroll after we look at the first part of it as we go through this. So, the first item was the roof replacement that was in CIP.
Yeah.
Made it, and it was bonded.
Okay.
Protect, the personal protective equipment body armor, um, was included, and as you can see, it was in the general fund as a contribution, and it's gonna be in that account there, so.
This is the fire, the fire personnel.
Fire, that's for fire, yeah. You see it to the far right? Uh, the, the new public safety fire police, uh, center, it did not, uh, make it this year. Um, the AED devices, uh, got funded at twenty-one thousand versus twenty-seven, and it's funded right from general revenues. The fire telephone system got bumped, as did the, uh, fire UTV medical transport unit. Uh, the staff vehicle unit got funded in the amount of forty-five thousand under lease. Uh, but a hundred and thirty-five got bumped. Uh, police, the chiller in the amount, uh, that was requested of three hundred got funded, and it was bonded. Police CID evidence vehicle and, uh, uh, was deleted, as was the CID vehicle. Uh, they kinda got all funded in this one big lump here. Uh, after further review, uh, they had concluded they could work with the two thirty-four, which, um, it had, um, three, uh, whoops, it's not gonna cooperate with me, three fusions and three SUVs.
Those are the ones Brandon was referring to.
Yeah, those are, those are notice CID.
This morning.
The fusions, well.
Fusions.
The other will go to patrol.
Okay.
Jumping down, that, that ended public safety, we get into general government. We, um, we don't have all the facts in yet for the, uh, ESG program, the energy savings program with Honeywell, so we thought it was best just to remove that for that this time. We'll come to you if we have a plan that we wanna submit. Uh, you, we already discussed the ten thousand, uh, was put in for the GOB CIP. Jumping over to field op operations, we've got a new, uh, au- uh, automated refuse truck at two seventy-five, at full, the full amount that was requested. It's under lease, as was the hundred and sixty-five thousand dollar dump truck. The excavator got, uh, pulled, you, you heard that earlier today. Uh, the special events pavilion was a contribution, uh, for the zoo. Uh, the pathway paving got bumped. Uh, the fencing ended up getting reduced to ten thousand dollars funded from Pago. And the bobcat, it's a combination of in-kind and contribution. Uh, so, the city's gonna contribute some services to represent its contribution of six thousand. Uh, the same for the, uh, uh, North American duck exhibit, and five thousand for the red wolf, uh, building improvements. But we put them all lumped in under contribution, 'cause it won't be cash. Moving down to infra- infrastructure, we had, uh, it's time for the, uh, next phase of the Main Street Master Plan for six point seven million. We had the bicycle master plan for five hundred and fifty, the urban greenway for seven seventy-five. The Waterside Park improvements got bumped. Um, the signage, uh, got increased and, uh, is moved from Pago to Bond at fifty. The zoning got, got eliminated, it got bumped. Uh, the park master plan got reduced from two seventy-five to one oh seven. Actually, one oh seven plus forty-eight. Part of that was coming from reallocating some funds on hand that were in, in an old pool, old, old, it's not really, it's in a, it's in what we, it's in a fund that's, we ca- we represent as a bond pool, but it, they, the funds didn't come from a bond, they came from previous Pago that was left over from, uh, from other projects. So, we're gonna reallocate those. Uh, another phase of the ma- Main Street Master Plan, we had a hundred thousand dollar contribution. Uh, Waterside Park improvements got, is a grant.
Something, I thought you said that was.
I just, yeah.
Yeah, about a, just.
Up further, it was thirty thousand that was on Waterside Park improvement, you go.
Oh, that's a, we're getting, yeah, we're getting a grant.
That's a, oh, a grant for, okay.
This up here got bumped, but, but I guess this grant's still in place.
Okay.
We had a bridge maintenance and replacement, uh, for one sixty-two, some streetscaping at two oh six. Uh, there, we had, uh, Riverwalk Amphitheater had a hundred thousand dollar contribution. We reduced the requested, uh, citywide concrete program of a hundred, that's typically asked for each year, to fifty. And the same for the citywide street repairs. Uh, we reduced the citywide street reconstruction from eight fifty to six hundred. These are, uh, pressure cookers here, 'cause they're coming out of general revenues. So, they're, they're always, uh, tough to get in at, at the full amount. So, that's it for the general fund. Any questions? Should I move to the water sewer?
Have the, have the HUR funds gone into the budget, been adjusted?
The, the full amount of the HUR funds that, uh, were, were the final allocation.
Including the supplemental from the government?
Right, have been.
That's in there.
That's in there, yeah. But we don't necessarily spend it all directly into this program here.
No.
Yeah, some of that goes into some more other street lines.
Correct.
Yeah.
But it is reflected, so.
It's reflected, the revenue's reflected.
Okay.
Uh, stormwater fund, there's not much here, we, we, we have a, a, a new street sweeper that was required. Releasing, we had some, um, storm drains, uh, on East Main Street at Burnett White. It was from Pago at a hundred and sixty. Um, water sewer, we had the three-quarter ton truck to replace the cargo van that was leased. We have the skid steer loader at fifty-six, that was fifty-six thousand, that was leased. We have, uh, all of the projects that were in CIP got funded either from Pago or from the revolving fund that we saw earlier today, or we were reallocating some funds that were not needed for some other projects in our bond pools. So, we had seven hundred and ninety-five thousand, so only seven hundred and fifty-five out of the two point one million was from new money, new, new bond money.
How, what's the position of our bond pool now? You know, I was gonna ask that, but.
Uh, we're. Yeah, it's, it's slowly but surely, uh, getting, you know, in better shape, yeah, yeah.
Can you, like, give us an update, not, it's not urgent, but to give us an update as to, uh, what's left to clean up?
Sure, yeah.
Stuff that's over?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah. Better write that down then, so. Remember.
Artie, do you know what the HURs, are you familiar with the highway user revenue money?
What is that, like, the gas tax or?
That's, yeah, it's gas tax, but it's, uh, end motor vehicles, tolls, what else is in there?
Uh.
Registrations?
Yeah, it's a combination of.
Yeah, it's a whole bunch of things, and well, I, I can, I'll explain it more in detail.
But we don't get that, do we?
What happened was many years ago, a few years ago, all the money was taken out, so.
And redistributed.
And for.
Other things. And now, we're, now we're starting to get it back.
Oh.
So, that's gonna, that impacts when I was asking about the HURs. That will, will, will help us get back into taking care of the roads the way we should on this.
So, the last fund was, uh, parking. Uh, we have a lot seven slash thirteen, uh, is, is in CIP to be refunded, it got included. Um, the parking, uh, vehicle got included. And lastly, the, uh, was not in CIP, but it should have been. Um, the first phase of the garage study said we needed to replace the bearing pads at the garage and, and for the amount of four hundred thousand. So, that's in there.
It's bonded, I assume?
Yes, huh, yeah. Those are all the projects in CIP.
Any questions? Okay. I think I'm fried for today. Good job from everybody. Really good job. And again, it's getting easier to do this, but it's still long. Um, we've got some follow-up things that I think we, we've tracked. Uh, fire department's got their assignment. And we'll just see where we are, and then we'll, we'll revisit items, uh, you can keep a track of things we wanna go back to and check, right, we only got a couple that so far. Hopefully we'll have, and I've still got, went through that list. All right. I guess, um, our next meeting, well, we have the Monday, it'll be the first reading of the, of the budget. And the next Wednesday, we have, uh, we have our, our finish, hopefully we'll be able to finish up. We got, uh, infrastructure and development, water and sewer, field ops in Poplar, I mentioned, HCD, finance, business development, debt service and other uses, and general discussion. Debt service, we're gonna talk in detail about, um, or we'll talk more in detail, but I'm, I'm interested in certainly the debt, debt service and how we're gonna attack it. Okay, thank you, everyone. Have a great day. We're done.